To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the operation and functioning of virtual meetings, this meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Juswicki? Is absent. Mr. Luise? Ms. Britto? Is absent. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, so we are on the outlook for them, I understand that Ms. Britto and Mr. Juswicki are also going to participate virtually. So we will keep an eye out for them, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion for the payment voucher recording secretary for this evening, February 8, 2021, please? All in favor? And also the payment voucher for the planning board secretary for this evening, February 8, 2021. Motion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. Any questions, comments, changes?
There are no minutes to be voted on, unfortunately. No, I apologize.
It's okay. Engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, anything? Thank you. Legal matters?
Nothing for this evening, Mr. Chairman, but I would say and alert the board that I anticipate an executive session at the next meeting on the 22nd.
Okay, boy, we're moving right along. Changes, Denise? Anything? Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Forward matters for discussion, ordinance number 01-21, amending and supplementing Chapter 244-209 of the Township of Jackson relating to stormwater management and non-pine lands regulated portions of the... Anyone care to comment regarding this ordinance?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is no different than every other municipality in New Jersey going through right now. It's new to the regulations and stormwater that the DEP has suggested we adopt. There's not really much of a choice, much like the pine lands. But it's in line, it's environmentally sound, it's all good, it's good purpose, so that's all.
Any questions, comments regarding? I guess we need a motion to adopt this?
Move to approve.
Excuse me, I apologize. It's not a motion to adopt. It's a motion to report favorably to the town council. I apologize, Dr. Campbell.
That's okay. I'll move to report favorably to the town council.
Thank you.
It looks like your vote wants to vote as well.
I know, I know.
Can we have a second? And roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Luise? Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Next up, we have a courtesy review, Block 7204, Lot 1, Ocean County Utilities Authority. Who would... Oh, we have a representative?
We do. My name is Lynn Dunn. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Listen to me. It's been a long day.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Dunn, I apologize. I just want to report for the record, it appears that Ms. Britto is ready to participate, I guess is the way to say it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, you are again, I'm sorry.
Sure. Lynn Dunn, D-U-N-N, I'm with the firm of Herring, Dupanex, Danzione, and Dunn, here this evening on behalf of the Ocean County Utilities Authority. And the good-looking gentleman to my left is Cornelius O'Regan, the ACE engineer at the Utility Authority, who's going to give scintillating yet brief discussion of the proposed facility.
Okay, he's wearing my colors. That's worth some points. No, that's worth some points.
Could he be sworn, please?
Yep. Sir, if you're raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information you're about to present to the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please?
Cornelius, I'll give it first, W-L-O-S-C-O-R-N-E-L-I-U-S, O'Regan, capital O, apostrophe, capital R-E-G-A-N. I am the engineering manager of the Ocean County Utilities.
And Ms. Dunn, I guess through the chair, if I may, do you have just a brief order? It's a qualification.
We accept your credentials.
There's... Speaker?
Oh, Ocean County Utilities Authority, as you know, handles the regional wastewater treatment for the area. One of our participants is Jackson Township MUA, Municipal Utilities Authority. For years, we have one piece of pipe that comes in. It has... It is not metered. The way we've been doing it for years is we go downstream to a meter, we read meters upstream, we subtract. It has been contested for years about the amount of flow. We know it's small, but it is... Nonetheless, it is part of the Jackson Township, as well as Ocean County, for billing purposes. So the solution is to build a metering station. What we will do is we will take the flow from that pipe, we will divert it into a small, below-grade chamber. We will then pump that water back up through a full pipe, through what they call a magnetic flow meter. Works beautifully when you have a full pipe of water. You can get very, very accurate flows. It will then be connected to the pump station, which is almost immediately adjacent to the proposed site. The work will take place on... Actually, it is being constructed on Jackson Township MUA property. We have all the permissions from them to build it. They are also endorsing the project because, as I say, this has been... The flow in this pipe has been contested for years, and this is the solution for it. This property is immediately behind, I believe it is Brookwood Parkway. I'm looking at my aerial here. And there are residences behind it. However, all of the construction will be below grade, with the exception of two electrical panels. We're bringing in new electric service. So the electric service panel and the electric controls panel will be mounted, will be above grade, small fence around it, and also a security light.
Anything else to add?
No, I'm not... But I can think of...
Mr. Cle?
Mr. Chairman, courtesy review.
Peters?
Use permitted in zone, as this can accidentally affect the zone, so I will...
Any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. At this point, I guess we have to open this up to the public to comment on this application. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Please raise their hand. Anyone, Anthony? Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Did you say Denise Gardner? Okay, go ahead, put her on. Denise, please unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening.
Okay. Ms. Garner, are you raising your right hand?
Yes, I am.
I solemnly swear affirm that the information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please.
Denise Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R, 8 Dover Court, Bear, Delaware. I am an ex Jackson Township resident.
Just remember, if I may...
Yes.
...a courtesy review for a public entity and a benefit, so...
I understand that. I'm just curious to, you know... It's not easy for anybody who's, you know, on Zoom. I'm an IT person all the way for many, many years, but it would be nice to see, you know, where the plans are or what he's presenting to the public. And I can't see it, and the rest of us cannot view that. And, you know, the location of what he's stating is, you know, it's a little bit... Even if you... I've lived in Jackson for 25, 26 years, so I'm very, very, you know, I'm very familiar with the township. So where is this location of, you know, and I do understand that it is a public necessary, you know, for the town, but...
All right, Joey.
Can you show us the plans?
Would you like to at least give the...
I have the aerial map or photograph. If this will help with the street.
I'm not sure where to bring it.
Well, have you... Can that be entered into as evidence?
What page is that?
This is not part of your...
Which page is this?
This one is page...
Site plan page.
Site plan page is page two.
Okay, the streets are... It runs behind... Oh, okay. Brookwood Parkway.
Sir, just... That's all. Just hang, stay over here.
Yeah, he could just, you know, if he just says states, you know, exactly where the streets are.
The bottom of the sheet is the backyards of Brookwood Parkway. And it runs between Montana Drive and West Virginia Drive. So if you were looking on Brookwood Parkway, it's the area behind. The next area to the top of the sheet is the utility company right of ways.
Okay, so in your statement about the fact that... You can correct me if I'm... Because I was trying to hear what you were stating about the need for this improvement. Really, is it to facilitate that entire area of Brookwood One? Or will it, you know, span further out into Jackson Township?
No, it will... It's right over the top of the existing pipelines is the physical location and actually adjacent to the two, parallel to the two pipelines, and further back from Brookwood Parkway.
Okay, so what you're basically saying, it's an improvement? That there's not going to be any more drawdown because of existing developments around there? Is that right?
No, this has nothing to do with flows. This is all to address existing flows.
The what's are? I can't hear you.
Existing flow.
The flow.
Waste water, existing wastewater flow.
Okay, all right.
There's no additional improvements, expansion of flows, or anything like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you, your explanation. That's all I have, but one last thing. As the meeting moves on and they do present plans, if you could be kind enough to show them to the public, for the next applications that come on, because it is, again, a little difficult to, you know, assess.
Denise, can you... I've been asking you nicely. Could you please reserve your comments to this application only? We don't need you to go into a dissertation of your feelings about how these meetings are being held. Please just speak about this application only. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Oh, Andy J, maybe, Mr. Juswicki.
Hi, this is Andy Juswicki. I have no idea how I got it. I really apologize, but I've been trying for 40 minutes. I'm in. And Timmy's trying too, so... Okay.
There he is. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public? No one. Okay. Any comments, any questions?
We're on now.
Yeah.
Okay, Andy, would you mind, unless you have a question, would you mind muting your microphone? And Mr. Dolan also, unless you have a question?
Well, Dolan's listening to me over his phone. He can't get in.
Okay, all right. Let's move along and get this application completed. Since there's no comments, no questions, anyone care to make a motion? All right, we're going to close public comment. We have a motion, please?
Close the closed public comment.
All in favor? Now, any closing votes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Dolan's on the phone with me. I don't know if that counts.
Well, you know, just for now, let... Yeah.
Dr. Campbell?
You're muted, Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Juswicki?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall? Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention. I almost feel guilty leaving. Almost. Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break to see if we can get some technical issues out of the way, and we'll be right back.
All right, here we go, this is our first application for this evening. It's a continuation of Block 10401, 17802, lots 5.04, 5701, Jackson Park, South Section. Mr. Cle, if you would mind, just bring us up to where we were at our last meeting and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the applicant finished his case, and now we've opened it up to the public, and we had an extensive public comment in the last meeting, but I think it'll continue tonight.
Okay. Mr. Peters, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Tuval, attorney for the applicant. Hope everybody's doing well. Yeah, I agree with both Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters. We left off at the last meeting with... We actually finished our case. Several members of the public got to speak, but I believe the evening ran long, so certain members didn't get to participate, and I believe the board was going to open it to those members. I just have one question procedurally, before we just get... Before we get started. In the event we are able to finish this evening, I don't know if we will or we won't, but in the event that we do, is every member of the board who's present eligible to vote where they've either attended the meetings or read the transcripts? I just wanted to ask that at the beginning.
Yes.
Okay. That was a yes, Sean?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So then, Mr. Chairman, all my witnesses are back, as we indicated they would be. And we're here for comments and questions, and to the extent I can do a brief closing in the event we get there, I would appreciate that, and thank you very much.
Okay, it's my understanding we have another attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gazarovski should be available and ready to call witnesses back for his cross-examination.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay, fine, thank you.
Hey, Ron, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Tuval, how are you?
Good, good to see you.
Say hello to Judge Wilson for me. I'm sure he's listening.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Are we all set to go?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gardner, are you... I'm sorry to jump in. Are you starting off, Mr. Gazarovski, first? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, Mr. Tuval, and for members of the board, just for lead-up. As you know, the matter was open to the public. Mr. Gazarovski has entered in an appearance on behalf... And Mr. Gazarovski, you're listening. You represent the Coupon Group, do you not?
That is correct.
Okay, and we've had a... Just again, for the board, for members of the public, for respectfully any of your clients who are listening in, and Mr. Tuval, it's my understanding, Mr. Gazarovski, that after you present any cross-examination you wish of Mr. Tuval's client's witnesses, you'll be providing a list of those individuals who you will be calling as direct witnesses so that we're not duplicative in terms of having comment. Is that correct?
I shall do that.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Gardner, could we just, for the record, know now what members of Coupon, Mr. Gazarovski represents, so we could just know the names? I know he indicated, or someone from his office indicated, he represented Ms. Hanum, Ms. Eleanor Hanum. Is there anyone else that's part of that group, just so we know right now?
Well, I represent the LLC, the corporate entity, and I intend to call an officer, Ms. Hanum, to testify. There are a number of other individuals, whether they're members of Coupon or not, I don't know. But what I would like to clarify is that, just so there's no misconception about Coupon, this is a local organization. It's my understanding that there's another entity known as Coupon that is located in North Jersey. This Coupon is in no way involved with that entity or related to it or funded by it. This is a Jackson organization, and I think there may be some members from Berkeley as well.
No, Ron, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that... I understand you said you were calling an officer of that entity. Okay, that's fine. But if there were other members or affiliates of that entity, people who have an affiliation or a membership, I would assume that also falls under your representation, so that's what I was asking.
Let me be clear. I am not representing any affiliate of this entity. So, and I wanted to... There was some correspondence between council. I think I corresponded with you, Mr. Tuval. It's my understanding, although I have no personal knowledge of it, that there is another organization known as Coupon who is very active in land use matters. This corporate entity or LLC here is not in any way connected with that other entity.
That's fine, Mr. Gazarovski. I was just making sure that the people that are listening and want to participate, if they are a member of Coupon, that you represent them, and they won't be speaking, they'll be speaking through you. So other than Ms. Hanum, are there other... I should say, I maybe used the wrong word before. Are there other members of Coupon that are here that you represent? That's what I should have asked them.
There are other members that are here that I represent at this particular point in time. I have not yet determined whether I will be calling them. I will be calling Ms. Hanum.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, and Mr. Gardner, just jump in if you think I'm...
Well, I think you're belaboring the point. I think that respectfully, I think, Mr. Gazarovski, you understand that the local Coupon Group, so to speak, exists of individuals more than just Ms. Hanum.
That's correct.
So, thank you. So that any individual whom you call, you're gonna... You represent that, so to speak, the corporate family. So we're going to ask you and presume that members of the public who are... That only... Strike it. Let me say it in the affirmative. Only members of the public who are not members of Coupon will be permitted to speak or ask questions as individuals. Otherwise, you're going to call folks who are related to the Coupon Group of Jackson, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Gazarovski, could you tell us what Coupon is?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Could you please tell everyone what Coupon is?
Okay.
And what it stands for?
I'll try to make it a short explanation, but Coupon is an entity formed by residents of Jackson, many of them who are longstanding members of the Jackson community, going back generations. They have a concern with regard to this particular application. And it is not a hostile objection. These are objections and concerns dealing with the environment and other issues solely related, which are land use issues. It is not an issue dealing with affordable housing or the like. These are issues dealing with the plan itself, and it is made up of residents who live in the area, are familiar with the area and the history of it, you know, and of course... I've been around long enough to go back when we had a hearing such as this in an old farmhouse in Jackson. So, these are people who have been here and have roots to Jackson for a long time. There is no competitive issue here. This is purely a homegrown issue.
Um, that didn't really explain what Coupon is and what, what it's about. Mr. Fleming? Mr. Fleming? Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Gazarovski, you know, you're, you're saying, I, I want to get a definition of what Coupon is, and you said it's a, you're not being clear.
Well, these are, these are interested parties who, rather than retaining a number of lawyers, have formed a group thinking that they're perhaps as strict in numbers, and they, Coupon is no different than an individual living down the street who raises the same objection, except here they're being raised perhaps collectively. I don't know what more I can say to clarify that.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through, through the chair, so, Mr. Gazarovski, as we've discussed, and as Mr. Gazarovski has indicated with correspondence through counsel, Mr. Gazarovski, all of Mr. Tuval's clients' witnesses are available. You can call whomever you wish, and we'll let them into the Zoom, and you can start your cross-examination.
Okay. And just so we're clear, I'm not, I'm not, I shouldn't say I'm not trying to be evasive, because I'm not being evasive. I'm trying to answer your question as you posed it, and I hope that I have. I, I went through the witness list, and quite frankly, the one name I didn't write down. I know at the earlier hearings, there was a representative of the applicant who testified, and you'll excuse me if I don't recall his name, but he's the gentleman that I would like to question first, and my questions often will be very brief.
All right, is that Mitch Newman, do you believe?
Mitch Newman, right.
Okay.
So, all right. So, Sean, you'll let him, somebody from IT will let Mitch into the room?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if Mr. Jacob could let in Mitch Newman, please. So, Mr. Jacob, can you show the entire, yeah. All right, Mr. Newman. Mr. Newman, do you hear us?
I hear you. Do you not hear me?
Oh, we hear you now.
Okay.
So, if, if you kindly raise your right hand, you've been previously sworn, but do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you are about to present to the board through cross-examination will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Again, you've been previously sworn, but just your full name and affiliation, please.
Mitchell Newman, I'm the Director of Land Acquisition and Entitlements for Lennar. Lennar is the managing member of the applicant and property owner ELAT Jackson LLC.
Okay, and through the chair, Mr. Gazarovski, he is your witness.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Good evening. I, I had, I had before me a letter which is dated April the 21st, 2020, which was signed by Sean D. Gertner Esquire, the law firm of Gertner and Gertner. And this was a letter that was sent to the Honorable Mark A. Troncone, dealing with the subject matter of the general development plan. Are you familiar with that correspondence?
Not specifically. I don't remember it out of context.
I understand that. I didn't expect you to. But, but it basically, if I could sit off by reading it, it says, "In accordance with the court's April the 7th letter, this will provide the court a report of the actions of Jackson Township Planning Board at a hearing that took place on April the 20th." And on the second page of that letter, Mr. Gertner writes to the court and points out that the public meeting in question started and resumed at about 9:45 PM, and it dealt with the prior denial of the Jackson Park North application, and it also touched on the Jackson Park South application. And he said in that letter to the court, also of significant importance to the board and the members of the public, "The application contemplates thousands of dump trunks entering and leaving the site with fill. A signalized connector road from County Route 571 to Perrinville Road is contemplated, but is under the county's jurisdiction. This roadway infrastructure is critical as the existing rural roads around the property, both the township and to a lesser extent the county road, cannot handle the level of construction vehicles called for and identified by the applicant during the prior hearings. The applicant did agree to this condition during the hearings, and the board was insistent that it remain articulating its application to assist the applicant where appropriate with the county. Remind all that this condition was created and agreed to by the applicant was the local roads would be subject to bringing in the volume of fill sufficient to fill a stadium perhaps twice or entirely incapable of handling the massive volume of overweight vehicles." So I want to clarify one thing. Was it the position of the applicant then, and it is the representation of the applicant today, that before construction starts on the site, that connector road will be constructed?
So before we get started, that, that was a letter dealing solely with the North application? That is not the application that's before this board at all? So that, that is, so I object to any questions on the North. The South application stands on its own, and the South application actually has no soil import that we talked about. So, the North application is a separate application, as you know, Mr. Gazarovski. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, and therefore, I'm going to object to any line of questioning regarding the North application.
All right, I, I apologize, gentlemen. We have to, we, for some reason, we lost audio for everyone. So whatever you two were saying to each other, we, we lost about 20 to 25 seconds.
Oh, Sean, did you hear, you heard what Mr. Gazarovski read, is that correct?
We heard his question based on the, excuse me, April 21st letter, but we lost him when he started to frame his question. So if he could rephrase, I, I know I.
Want me to have the court reporter? Should the court reporter read it back?
Yes, please.
Okay, Rhonda, can you do that?
Sure, where, where do you want me to start, Jason?
I believe Mr. Gertner asked, once Mr. Gazarovski asked a question about the letter he wrote, to repeat that for the board.
If the last thing that I have on our end is, was it the position then and representation, dot, 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 that's where I left off.
Cannot handle the level of construction vehicles called for and identified by the applicant during the prior hearings. The applicant did agree to this condition during the hearings, and the board was insistent that it remain articulating its application to assist the applicant where appropriate with the county. Is that still the letter, Jason?
Yes. And Sean, did you hear my objection, or would you like me to repeat that or have Rhonda read it back?
I want to clarify one thing. Was the position of the applicant then, and is it the representation of the applicant today, that before construction starts on this site, that connector road will be constructed? Mr. Tuval, all right, so before we get started, that was a letter dealing solely with the North application. That is not the application that's before this board at all. So I object to any questions on the North. The South application stands on its own, and the South application actually has no soil import that we talked about. So the North application is a separate application, as you know, Mr. Gazarovski. I just want to make sure everybody is on the same page. Therefore, I'm going to object to any questioning regarding the North application.
My, my response to that is that both the North and the South plans are part of a general development plan, the GDP, the North and the South, and there is a degree of interrelation. Now, it may very well be at a later point in time, Mr. Tuval will argue, that it's not applicable to the South, but I think my question of Mr. Newman with regard to the content of that letter and the representation that before construction begins on the North, because it's going to impact, impact the surrounding area, the connector road will be constructed.
I object again, it's, it's not only irrelevant, but being dealt with in a litigation as conditions of approval, and we're not going down that road in this case. So if you have questions about the South application, you should ask them.
I, I think that the construction of a connector road impacts the surrounding area of the South application, and I think it's a proper question, and I'd like your response.
I'm directing the witness not to answer the question.
So, so, if I may, Mr. Gazarovski, can you rephrase your question to relate this connector road to the South application?
Okay. Mr. Newman, is it your, is it your position or the position of your client that the South application can be constructed without the benefit of the connector road being constructed?
Yes.
Okay. Do you acknowledge or do you admit that the North and the South applications are in close vicinity to each other?
Do you mean in terms of miles or feet?
No, just in terms of the general location of both of them.
They're both in Jackson Township? I'm, I'm not sure where you want me to go with that.
Well, do you agree that both the North and the South applications were part of the general development plan?
Correct.
And that the applicant executed necessary documents in a settlement to effectuate not only the application for the South and North as well. One was just, one was just heard prior to the other one. In this particular matter, the North application was heard first, and now we're going to hear the South's application. My only question of view is, was one of the conditions as is set forth in Mr. Gertner's letter, that with regard to the North application, that before construction was started, the connector road would be built?
And I object to that line of questioning that is being dealt with by the court in the North application hearings. It has nothing to do with the South application, so we're not going to get into, we're not going down that road.
That's not true at all. I mean, the connector road, when constructed, and if, if in fact it is not constructed and the North site is, is being built, it will impact the roads in the surrounding area. Now, the letter is really pretty clear, and it's very simple. They either acknowledge that they agreed to that, or they don't.
Well, so, if I may, Mr. Gazarovski, to the extent that the issue is being, that acknowledgement in and of itself as an officer of the court I can represent is an issue before the court. Now, you rephrased the question, and Mr. Newman, I think you answered it, but I'll make sure, just in case the record is clear. Was it your testimony that the South parcel need not utilize the connector road for its construction and development? That's a question Mitch, to Mr. Newman.
I mean, to be straight, no, I never said that, Sean, but you're, you're dancing around my answer to the question. So.
I, I'm trying to relate it back. Can you clarify then? I'm not trying to dance, I'm just.
I, I just don't understand why we're talking about the connector road and the North application when we know that the North application is not part of this application, number one, and number two, that the North application is in litigation, which we should not be talking about in an open setting like this. So, if Mr. Gazarovski has questions about the South, we are happy to answer them.
Okay, Mr. Newman, do you acknowledge that if in fact the North application is constructed without the benefit of the connector road being built first, it will have an impact on that road system surrounding the South application?
He's not a traffic engineer. I object to that question. And again, I object to the constant discussion about the North application versus the South application. I don't want to keep objecting, Mr. Chairman, and giving you a hard time or the board a hard time on this issue, but it, the questions are irrelevant.
Well, let me try to make it a little simpler. With regard to the North application, is that part of a general development plan?
Yeah, that was ruled on before the board.
Well, that's a legitimate question directed to your witness. So I would ask Mr. Newman to ask that, answer that question, please.
I lost.
Hold on, Sean, I believe Mitch lost connection for a second. Let him, just give him a second to come back.
May I ask the court reporter, Mr. Newman, are you back?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know why my computer kicked off.
Listen, court reporter, can you read, read back Mr. Gazarovski's last question, please?
With regard to the North application, is that part of a general development plan?
That's a question to me?
Yes.
Yes, the North was part of a general development plan.
Okay, now, is the, is this, was the South project also a part of that same, that same general development plan?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay.
Do you have any redirect, Mr. Tuval?
No.
All right, so, Mr. Gazarovski, if you'd kindly call your next witness.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump around a bit perhaps, but I'm gonna call the planner, Mr. Raffin, I think it's Raffincamp, is it? I think.
Mr. Rayenkamp, Ron.
I'm sorry, Rayenkamp.
That's a long one, that's a long one.
With a name like Gazarovski.
That's true. He, he competes with you a little bit over there, Cray Rayenkamp, that's right.
Except perhaps, his ancestors came over on the Mayflower, not mine.
All right, let me, let's get Cray into the next. All right. All right, Ron, it looks like he's getting on there, hold on.
I am here.
Mr. Raffincamp, kindly raise your right hand, please. You've been, is that your?
Your other right hand.
Sorry. I'm left-handed.
You've been previously sworn, but do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you are about to present before the board in response to cross-examinations will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just briefly, your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, please.
Yeah, I had to say full name. My first name is John, I never use it. Middle name is Cray, C-R-E-I-G-H, last name Randkamp, R-A-H-E-N-K-A-M-P.
All right, and through the chair, Mr. Gazarovski, he is your witness.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. Mr. Randkamp, you earlier testified in this matter, did you not?
Um, yes. If by "in this matter" you mean the GDP, the North and the South, the answer is yes three times.
Okay, well, you testified, I take it, as you said, before the GDP, and then I guess separately, you also testified on behalf of the applicant with regard to the North application.
Yes, sir.
And you testified before this board concerning the application, which is before the board this evening?
Yes, sir.
And I've looked at a transcript which I was provided with, and that meeting took place on February the 1st of 2021. Is that not so?
I believe that's the date, yes. I don't have it in front of me, but by recollection, yes.
All right, you don't have a copy of the transcript?
Um, I don't.
You don't have it available?
I believe it was emailed to me. I think I can probably find it.
It might be easier if you were to find it and you could just go refer to it.
Yes, sir, I have it.
Okay, would you go to page 62 of that transcript? Okay, would you go to page sixty-two of that transcript?
Ronnie, are you talking about the mini transcript or the bigger one?
I'm sorry, I have the bigger one.
Okay, yeah, no, it's okay. Just wanted to make sure we knew which one, that's all.
Okay, but you both.
The page numbers are the same either way.
Right.
They're just shrunk. We're share a page. All right, yes, I'm on page sixty-two, sir.
Okay, now in that, and I have some questions with regard to your testimony on that, and more particularly the issue. Of the variance. You referred to a letter dated August the tenth, two thousand and twenty. Which I believe was signed by Mr. Peters. Who is with Remington Vernick Engineers, correct?
Yes, sir.
And in your testimony, you referred to his comment on page twelve. At number eleven and said, the issue you said, and the issue is that there is parking all. Parking alongside of our streets. And Mr. Peters was taking the possible position. Or at least interpretation that the parking is somehow. Off-street parking and is therefore required. To meet the ordinance requirement for a twenty-five foot setback. Between off-street parking and the public street.
Yes, I think that's a fair summary.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading your words from the beginning, so.
Then I agree with me.
Okay, fine. Now, in looking at Mr. Peter's letter. On. Let me just, excuse me for one second. On, on page twelve of that letter. At comment number eleven. He writes as follows, per section two four four dash five one. Point two K per N two and per N. Parking shall be set back twenty-five feet from any road. Three hundred and seventeen parking spaces are proposed. Within the public right of way. Parking should be designed to be completely out of the public right of way. And set back appropriately. Plan should be revised. Or the applicant shall request a waiver. Now. When he's discussing that, he's talking about. Head-on parking, some of which is in the public right of way, correct?
Yes, as drawn, half of each of the space roughly is in the right of way and half is outside.
Okay, now. My understanding of what the ordinance says. Is that if you're going to have onsite parking. That parking must be set back twenty-five feet from the public roadway.
No, you can have on, I'm assuming you mean on-street parking.
No, I mean.
You're always permitted to have on-street parking under RSIS.
I understand that.
He took the position that if a parking space was partially outside of the right of way, that that would trigger the setback.
Okay, but let me, let me rephrase the question. I want to just set the groundwork perhaps, so bear with me.
Sure.
On-site parking and there is. Off-site parking, correct?
Do you mean onsite or on-street?
On-site. On-site would mean that the parking.
All of the parking is onsite.
Let me finish the question, please, okay? I know you want to get your point across and I'll give you that opportunity. But onsite would mean that the parking is on or contained within the parameters of the site, correct?
Yes, and, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, sir. I think the word you're looking for is on-street and off-street. On-site would be anything on the track.
Yeah. So, I understand that, trust me, I understand that, okay? So, off-site would be on the street, correct?
No, off-site would be on somebody else's parcel.
Well, you are in fact, uh, looking to place some of this parking on land which is owned by the municipality, aren't you?
Not at the moment. It would be owned by the municipality once the right of ways were dedicated.
Okay, now, let, let's just take it step by step. The way I read that ordinance, it says that in a project such as this. Uh, and you have onsite parking, which I would think to be a parking lot or a parking field. Located on the property to accommodate the multifamily housing units. Would that be a fair statement?
I, I don't know what onsite parking is. That's not a term that, that works.
Okay. What, what would you call then a parking lottery, parking field? Which is located within the confines of the project?
Well, everything within the project is onsite. The parking that's along the street is onsite. Might may finish the quick, my answer, sir. Parking lot that you're speaking, we're speaking about would be off-street parking.
Okay, well, if it's off the street. That means that it's then on the site, correct?
Sure.
So that's onsite parking. Parking, okay, fine. So if in fact this project as constructed. Were to have a parking field or a parking lot located on the site. Solely contained within the site. The ordinance says you have to have a setback of twenty-five feet. From, uh, the travelway or the roadway or the street, correct?
Right, if it's off-street parking.
If it's off, and my question was, if it's onsite parking, then you must have a. Twenty-five foot setback from the street, correct?
We're having trouble with vocabulary. If, if you're talking about a parking lot that's not connected to the travelway of the street. That's off-street parking, it would require the twenty-five foot setback. If the parking spaces are connected to the travelway of the street, that's on-street parking and would not require the setback.
Let's talk, let's talk then about, uh, let's talk then about. Uh, how this parking lays out and I've read your. Uh, I've read your comments and I, and I think that I, uh, I think I understand, okay? Now, when you say, when we have a public street would have a, a right of way. Of normally fifty feet, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, one that has parallel parking would, yes, sir.
Well, okay, look, I'm going to take it very slow. And you can answer me however you like, but I'm going to try to keep my questions simple.
Right.
In, in Jackson, the normal right of way of a public street is fifty feet, correct?
I can't testify as to existing conditions in Jackson, but that would be the RSIS residential access street.
Okay. And according to the RSIS standards. A traveled way, a street within a community such as this. Publicly traveled, the right of way would be fifty feet.
Right, for a residential access street with parallel parking, it would be fifty feet.
And that's what this is.
That, well, that's what it is partially, and then we have the head and spaces.
Oh, let's, let's keep on going, okay? And also with regard to that fifty feet, fifty foot right of way. There would be a traveled way or a paved way of thirty feet. Correct?
That would be a street type, yes.
Right, well, in this particular case, the street type. For traveling of vehicles, not for parking of vehicles, the traveled way is thirty feet, correct?
I believe that's the case. I, I don't know for sure. It could be twenty-eight feet under a different RSIS classification. But I think this one is thirty and one of our traffic engineers can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll buy that, okay? But now, when we have a thirty-foot wide traveled way which is paved. Then we have on each side of that thirty feet. A additional ten-foot right of way. On each side, which goes to make up the fifty feet.
Yes, sir.
Now. Who would own the thirty-foot traveled way?
If the streets are dedicated, the municipality would own everything in the travelway and within the fifty feet.
Well. I- isn't it also true that in modern times today? In many approvals, and I understand when you're talking about who owns the underlying fee. But in this particular case. The municipality would own the road and also own the underlying fee, would they not?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be true also of the ten-foot right of way on each side of the thirty-foot traveled way.
Yes.
Okay, so. What we're talking about here with regard to this. Head-on parking is that the first ten feet. Going into that parking stall would be owned by the municipality.
Yes.
Okay. And the remaining five feet would be on the property owned by the developer.
Yes.
Now. I, I know what the answer to this question is, but why, why not then? Does the, or why not would the developer have to get a variance for the setback? With regard to the five feet that he owns?
Two different issues. The definition of whether it's on-street or off-street. Depends on its connection to the throughway, not who owns it. Who owns it's irrelevant to determining on-street and off-street. And the ordinance section that you're referring to. Two forty-four dash fifty-one point two K two is about off-street parking. So they are not by definition off-street.
Well, the, the remaining five feet and your parking stall is, uh, off-street parking, isn't it?
No, it's owned by somebody else. It's still on-street parking. It's still physically connected to the street. That the definition of on-street and off-street has nothing to do with who owns it.
Okay, look, let's, let's talk about the ten-foot, uh, shoulders, so maybe that'll. Make it easier to understand. There's a ten-foot shoulder, correct?
In a residential access street, it's not really much of a shoulder, but yes, there's a parking lane in that area.
Well, a parking lane would be normally within the thirty-foot traveled way, wouldn't it?
Yes, as is this. As is the first distance of this space.
Right, but when, when one conducts a, a thirty-foot traveled way, are you suggesting then? That they would also then construct an additional lane alongside that traveled lane for parking?
No, under RSIS, a thirty-foot width allows parking on both sides. So within that thirty feet, you're actually compressing the travel leg, travel way to make room for parking.
Okay, so what, isn't it then possible for you? To construct a conforming thirty-foot wide traveled way? That would allow parking in the, uh, traveled way, uh, parallel parking? And then the area outside of that would remain green, correct?
Well, no, because in a townhome section with the frequency of driveways that we have. You can't accommodate enough parallel parking on the street. The driveways cut it up too much, so you need to find somewhere else to park.
Okay, you, you're absolutely right. You have to find someplace else to park. But that's not what you're doing. What you're looking to do is to take. Almost seventy percent of the property owned by the municipality. To use for your private person, a private use to accommodate your parking needs. Isn't that what you're doing?
That's the same thing that parallel parking is.
No, parallel parking would be parking in the thirty-foot travels way. Here, and that would be parking on a public roadway. Here, what you are doing is you are removing, you are removing. Ten feet from the property owned by the municipality. And delegating it over to the use of the builder so that he can satisfy his parking needs.
No, if it was parallel parking, the eight-foot width of a parallel space would be used for the same parking. There's the same cars either way. Whether you rotate them ninety degrees or not, there are the same cars occupying that same area of the public street.
Well. You know, if you in fact had parallel parking. If you had true parallel parking within the thirty feet span. Then you would not need a variance for the setback, would you?
I don't think we need a variance for the setback.
Okay.
I've already testified to that.
I understand that. Now, let's talk about, uh. If we acknowledge that the municipality owns two-thirds. Of that parking stall and the developer owns the remaining one-third. Have, have you received, have you received a written agreement? Or have you attempted to get an agreement from the municipality? That would allow, that allow you to utilize their property for this head-on parking?
Um, I don't have a written agreement. It has been discussed between the applicant and the municipality. That the homeowners association would take over the long-term maintenance responsibility of the entire space, regardless of where the right of way falls.
I, I, I understand that. I mean, if I, if I could, if I could acquire that much land and only agree to shovel snow. Uh, I, I'd be, I'd be all on board with that as well. But do you have, do you have in fact, uh, an agreement?
I've, I've already said I've not seen a written agreement.
Okay, and now you're a planner, are you not?
I am.
Uh, and I think you're a respected planner within the state and I've. I've listened to your testimony and I'm, I'm not looking to demean, uh, your abilities.
Thank you, sir.
That, well, we got to be gentlemanly about this, even though we don't agree. Now. Would you agree with me? That if in fact the municipality at this point in time owned two-thirds. Of that parking stall. They would have to be named as an applicant with this application because you're making a decision concerning their property.
I think that's a legal question, not a planner question, and I would object and say that's incorrect.
Well, he could, he could, he can testify as to what an interested party is and whether or not. This board has jurisdiction if an interested party and the property owner is not a part of the application.
I can only answer from experience and my experience is.
I don't want, I don't.
In no development have we ever had the municipality as an applicant because we were dedicating our streets to them after approval.
Hey now, you're not, we're not talking about dedicating streets. We're talking about here. Of you're looking to get from the municipality. Land for you to utilize, utilize as parking stalls for your project. Now my question to you is. If they own that land, they're an interested party, are they not?
I, I disagree with your premise, sir.
No, are they an interested party?
If this land, if this land was, was previously subdivided and we, and we were using a municipal lot. Yes, but that's not the case.
It's nothing, what are you, you're saying, you're using, you're using. What you're really using is municipally-owned property to satisfy your parking needs.
You said that three times and I disagreed three times.
Cray, Cray, hold on a second. First of all, let me just, Ron, before you continue, let me just. As, uh, object, uh, from, to one thing. And you were going pretty long there and I wasn't chiming in, you see that? But, um, uh, objecting, I have to object here though because. This is not municipal land today. You're, 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 you're using the premise that this is municipal land. This is all the applicant's land. So I just want to make that very clear. This is all the applicant's property. And as, as Cray indicated, they would be dedicating areas for the street. This is not municipal land that we're using.
Okay, well, if, if the, if the ordinance calls for a fifty-foot right of way. Is he not then obligated to, uh, in- include that right of way in the property being deeded to, to the town?
The ordinance doesn't call for a right of way.
If not, then you have to go for a variance to say, I'm not, I'm not going to have streets with a fifty-foot right of way.
Well, you, you can argue that if, if that's your opinion, that's fine. You, you're arguing that, that's fine. And you can ask Cray about it, but I just wanted to make that one other point clear. But continue your, continue your questions if you have any one.
Uh, I have some more questions. Well, you in your, you in your, uh, testimony. Before the board, and I'm looking for the page. You even show on your plan, you described it as a thick, dark line indicating what property. In the parking stall would be owned by the municipality and what property would be owned by the developer, didn't you?
Yes, it's shown on A fourteen as a future condition, once this was approved.
Okay. But you don't feel that the municipality. When you're talking about satisfying the right of way, uh, that they must be a part of this application?
Well. There is no requirement in the ordinance to have a particular right of way. That's not a regulated feature. What's regulated is on and off-street parking. These are on-street parking spaces. So, yes, there's a right-of-way issue, but that's not a regulated. Feature of the ordinance that we would get a variance from, which is why it's a de minimis exception from RSIS.
Now, how many, how many parking spaces are there in this, uh, head-on parking?
Parking count you would have to get from the traffic engineer. I don't know the number.
You can't give me a guess?
No.
Is it over?
We don't want to guess. We don't wanna guess, Ron, come on.
It's over three hundred?
Craig, do you know, don't, don't guess if you don't know.
I, I don't know. Um, it's, it's gonna be half the number of towns and stack towns because that's where we're providing guest parking.
Ron, if you, if you, if you want that number, we can get you the exact number so you have it, but I just don't wanna guess. Okay, fair enough.
Well, if you wanted to, and, and we're assuming that there is a uh, a ten-foot uh assuming there's a fifty-foot right-of-way as per the RSIS standards? And assuming that the paved width is thirty feet and there is this ten feet on each side? Uh, you could in fact go to the end of the right-of-way and construct those head-on spaces completely on your client's property, couldn't you?
Um, how are you suggesting they would access the public street?
Just back out, as they would be doing.
Just be twice as long. Yeah, I guess you could build something twice as long.
Well, when you say twice as long, uh, but you'd be building your set, you'd be building your parking spaces solely on your property.
Yes, that's physically possible. You're creating more pavement than is necessary, but it's physically possible.
Well, you could, you could reali- you could realign the streets and you could realign uh the buildings so that you didn't have to do the additional ten feet.
No, you, you could, you, to get from the travel way to the parking space, you would still need pavement.
Okay, having said all of that, having said all of that, you could have designed this project so that you would not have to have this Rube Goldberg uh, half-owned, half-not-owned head-on parking by designing it by having a lesser number of units? But having all of a necessary parking on your client's property and also satisfy the twenty-five-foot setback. Couldn't you do that?
No, and not achieve the required number of units under the settlement agreement and fair share plan.
Well, you could have had a greater number of affordable housing units and a lesser share of uh uh, 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 market price units, couldn't you?
Well, I, I assume there's always a possibility of building a single-family house and it would comply. A project as contemplated by the settlement agreement and GDP could not be built unless there were a solution for guest parking. This is the solution for guest parking that has been part of the plans now for a good number of years.
Well, you know, uh, as part of all that overall plan, uh, the connector road was also a part of an overall plan, wasn't it?
The connector road has nothing to do with any of my planning testimony.
Okay, on page uh sixty-six, if you go to that page.
Ron, you're still referring to the same transcript, same day?
Yes, I know.
Okay. That's the February first transcript, right, Ron?
That's the one we started out with, that's the same one.
Okay.
But, but just so our record is clear, with regard to testimony from this witness, I will not be referring to any other transcript.
Okay, fair enough. Just wanted the record to be clear.
Now, in page sixty-four of the transcript, can you go to that page, please?
Yes, sir.
Now, your main argument, as I understand it, for not having parallel parking is that you are saying that uh, the driveways into these units are so close together that parallel parking uh is not a, a logical thing to do.
Generally, yes.
Uh, what is the difference between the uh driveways in this project?
Um, well, where you've got the stacked townhouses and they're paired, it's several feet. Um, between them is maybe six feet. In the townhouse section, it's without being stacked, it's a little larger. Uh, but less than the eighteen to twenty that you'd wanna see for a parking space.
Okay, so, so what you're basically saying is that the way in which you're designing this project? There cannot be parallel parking uh in the thirty-foot wide uh uh paved area.
Right, not directly in front of units. There are places where it could happen, but not directly in front of units.
But having said that, the other possibility is, is that you simply design your project? So those driveways do not uh come out in that area? And, and you wouldn't need to do what you're attempting to do with the head-on park. Do you know whether or not the developer in this particular matter ever attempted to design this project in such a way? That he did not have to have this uh methodology or method of having head-on, head-on parking in the public right-of-way?
Well, the, the issue and the solution go to the provision of townhomes. Um, if the developer weren't providing townhomes and did it all in apartments, uh, this issue wouldn't come up. So it, it's tied to providing townhomes and stacked townhomes as, as part of the uh types of housing that are part of the application.
Well, but as you pointed out, uh, if he had simply built apartments, not townhomes? He could have parking fields or tar- or parking lots on the property, subject property? And be able to satisfy the twenty-five-foot setback requirement.
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so this is kind of like a self-created hardship, is it not?
Um, it comes inherently with providing a particular form of housing, that, that desired housing type in the marketplace. Builders wanna provide townhomes to the people who want them.
Yeah, but you can't always get what you wish for, can you? I mean, if in fact the zoning in this particular area provides for the building of apartments? Uh, and if he built apartments, we wouldn't have this issue with regard to the head-on parking. That's something which he could do. If he chooses to do townhomes, uh, that's another issue.
If you're asking me choices, I would say yes, but the choice he's made is consistent with all of the history and documents that I've recited to you.
Oh, please, tell me what history and documents you recited that mandate that apartments can't be built there.
The settlement agreement has a unit mix in it that was approved as part of the settlement.
And it had, but didn't that settlement agreement have to comport with the zoning of the municipality?
No, the zoning came after the settlement agreement to effectuate the settlement agreement.
No, was it?
Yes, I wrote it.
Wasn't the zoning in place in Jackson with regard to uh the necessity of having a twenty-five-foot setback uh for parking? That, that ordinance was in place, wasn't it?
Uh, no, that's still part of the same section.
Well, is there anything in the settlement agreement which says uh, you, you don't have to have twenty-five-foot setbacks?
The settlement agreement had a concept plan attached to it, and the purpose of drafting the zoning district was to enable that plan.
Okay, now why did Mr. Peters point it out then?
He uh started with the same interpretation as you did this evening, that it was inappropriate to have on-street parking outside of a right-of-way.
But you, but you, you know, not to sound repetitive, but you are in fact parking in the right-of-way, aren't you?
Part of, part of the space is in the right-of-way and part of it is not, yes.
Two, two-thirds of the space is in the right-of-way? And yet you just simply earlier said it wasn't good to have parallel parking in the right-of-way, but you're saying head-on parking in it right-of-way is okay.
Yes, the solution when dealing with townhouses and stacked towns, under RSIS, you need to find half a space of parking in a reasonably accessible location, and you want that to be proximate to your residents. And the way we accomplish that in land planning is to find the spaces, the, the spaces along the street between buildings and at the ends of streets, where you can do small clusters of head-in spaces to meet that demand. If you were going to require that they be done as off-street parking areas with the twenty-five-foot setback? You could still get the spaces, but they're gonna be in relatively few locations and a much greater distance to walk for residents to get to their homes from those spaces. It becomes very inefficient for the people who are gonna live there.
But it can be done, correct?
Theoretically, sure.
And are you telling me that you designed it this way out of the goodness of your heart to satisfy the people gonna be living there?
Well, it won't come as a surprise to you, sir, that developers wanna sell units to people who wanna buy them. And having parking close to your unit is something that people value.
Well, here they're gonna have, you're gonna have to walk from the, the street area uh to the units, aren't they?
Just as you would from a parallel space, and there's a cluster of these in each neighborhood, so every neighborhood has the opportunity for guest parking close to their homes.
Didn't you say, didn't you say in this transcript? That the main reason why you didn't wanna have the head-on parking solely on your client's property? Was because to do that, uh, the cars would be porked a substantial distance up in the green area alongside the existing driveways.
Yes, it's, it's, it's inefficient and a waste of pavement.
On page sixty-seven, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you say, so from my interpretation of what on-street in off-street parking means, going back to the sources other than your ordinance? Because your ordinance doesn't define it, I find that these are on-street parking spaces. They would not be subject to the interpretation or interposition of the
No, I agree with you. It should be interpretation.
I mean, okay, it's, okay, so in other words, interpositions incorrect, it should be interpretation. If I, I, I find that these are on-street parking spaces and would not be subject to the inter- interpretation of a twenty-five-foot setback between the road and park.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling, you're telling this board now that despite the fact that two-thirds of this parking area is gonna be on uh municipal property? Uh, in a municipal roadway? Uh, you're saying and one-third is on property owned by the developer? Even though uh the developer owns a third of that area, there's still, there's still comports to be uh on-street parked.
Yes, as I have said, on-street and off-street are defined by their physical connection to the street, not where the right-of-way is.
Say it again, please.
Whether a parking space is on-street or off-street depends on its relationship to the street itself, its connection to the street? And not where the right-of-way is. Uh, I'll, I'll try that again. Under the RSIS, there are street types that allow parallel thirty-degree, forty-degree, sixty-degree, and ninety-degree parking coming off of the street. All of those are permitted on-street parking configurations. They have implications for how wide the right-of-way would need to be. But those are all on-street orientations. So what I'm saying is under section K of the ordinance that deals with off-street parking? First, the space has to be off-street. If it's off-street, then it needs a twenty-five-foot setback. These are not off-street as a predicate fact.
Tell me, tell me how they're not, tell me how they're not off-street.
They're connected to the street. The very definition of on-street is that they're connected to the roadway. This is not a separate parking lot.
But it, but this, but you, in order to do that, you're using a part of the roadway, aren't you?
I will absolutely agree with you, sir. The right-of-way goes through the middle of them. What I'm saying to you is the right-of-way has nothing to do with the definition of on-street and off-street.
Okay. Let me take a few minutes to at page uh seventy-two. Same transcript.
What do they do with it?
No, sir.
I'm sorry. Who's opening other exhibits to try and find the one to show you. Okay, I'm, I'm back to the transcript. What page did you want, sir?
Page seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Yes, sir, I'm there.
Now, you say there now, the issue of the right-of-way under the residential site improvement standards, there are two standards, either of which appropriate. A fifty-foot right-of-way with parallel space.
Mr. Gatz, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gazarovski, can you speak more clearly? We're not getting you here.
Uh, we're on page seventy-two, uh, the next to the last paragraph. Uh, and you say, a fifty-foot right-of-way, no, I'm sorry, you begin by saying now, the issue on the right-of-way? Under the residential site improvement standards, there are two standards? Either of which is appropriate, a fifty-foot right-of-way with parallel spaces. Uh, that would mean thirty-foot paved with parallel parking spaces on the thirty-foot paved, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Or, I forget the number, I believe it's a ninety-foot right-of-way with head-in spaces.
Right, and I was incorrect. It's actually seventy-two. I've had a chance to go back and look it up.
Okay, so when you say seventy-two, uh that would mean a fif- fifty-foot paved way or a thirty-foot paved way?
No, it's, it's still the same paved way. You're just having deeper spaces entirely within the right-of-way on both sides of the street. A head-in space is gonna be roughly twenty feet, so you're adding forty feet of parking on either, twenty feet of parking on either side for an aggregate of forty. Thirty feet travel way in the middle, you're up to something like a seventy-foot wide paved area for travel and parking.
That, that would mean complete use of the uh municipally-owned property to satisfy your parking needs, correct?
That's what on-street parking typically is, yes.
Well, on-street, and I, and I think you even referred to, let me, let me go on further. When you've got either townhomes or single-family homes with driveways and headed spaces? That becomes impossible to do. What do you mean by that?
You can't ha- that was the issue that we were talking about earlier. You can't have parallel parking with frequent driveways and have it work.
That's not what you said. You said, well, you've got either townhomes or a single-family homes with driveways and head-in spaces, that becomes impossible to do.
Right, now here I'm talking about smaller, single-family homes. Um, I'm working on projects that have uh thirty-five or forty-foot lot widths that are still single-family homes? And the driveways are still too frequent to get sufficient guest parking in that density of driveways.
So you're saying with single-family homes, you're also parking in the right-of-way with head-on parking?
Wait, wait, we're, we're, we're talking past one another. If you're doing the seventy-two-foot-wide right-of-way with head-in parking, that's a public street and parking in the public street.
Of the seventy-two-foot right-of-way, what percentile of that or portion of that is paved?
Um.
If you don't know the answer, the
No, okay.
I just don't like it when you spec- when anyone
It's an RSIS street. I'm just trying to remember. The travel way is gonna be around twenty. The two head-in spaces will be twenty on each side, so it's about sixty feet of paving.
Okay, now, uh, I, I recognize that parallel parking is permitted. But in this particular case, what you're really doing is you're, you're, you're utilizing a significant portion of municipally-owned property for your private use.
Obje- obje- Ron, just before you keep going, I just wanna put the, an objection on the record. It's not municipally-owned property. The applicant owns all the property that's part of this project.
It will become municipally-owned property.
Upon dedi- dedication, but
Gentlemen, Mr. Gazarovski, I think you need to move along.
Right, let me, let me ask you this question.
About this on-street, off-street.
Okay, when you, when you, when you were determining the percentage of impervious surface? Which is on this site, uh, did you consider the impervious surface that was in the right-of-way?
Craig, is that a better question for you or the site engineer? I just wanna make sure we're answering it correctly.
I, I'm sure the answer is yes, but definitely have her confirm it.
Okay.
That, that, that is, in other words, all, all the impervious surface that's in the right-of-way used for head-on parking? Uh, that was figured into the impervious surface calculations.
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Ray, Ray in camp, would you, would, would I ask you this question? Uh, over the years, have you done a lot of work in the township of Jackson?
Um, I, I've done some projects, yes.
Okay, how, approximately, how many would you say?
Um, probably four or five, including commercial applications.
Okay, uh, how about non-commercial applications for a townhouse or residential project? or residential projects such as this?
Probably that I've, I probably have not appeared before the board on applications. I've worked on two or three others that then ultimately didn't need planning customer.
Okay, now, but in so doing, in the time you spent, did you become aware of the historic significance of some of the areas of Jackson?
Sure, I know the area.
Do you live in the area?
I grew up in Mount Laurel. I certainly know Jackson.
Okay, now, with regard to the areas of wetlands, are you familiar with those locations within the site plan?
Yes.
Do you know whether or not there'll be deed restrictions put in place and able to be reviewed by the public with regard to how those wetlands are being treated and deed restricted?
Ron, we can answer that question. I think it's better for the site engineer than Mr. Rayn Camp because she dealt with the DEP permitting. So I'm not, I'm not avoiding the question. I just think Ms. Galvin is a better person to answer that question.
Who did you say was?
I said, I think the site engineer is probably the better person. I'm not, again, I'm happy to answer it. I just want to give you the best person to answer.
Okay.
Hang on, hang on. Gentlemen, let me make a suggestion for the two attorneys, please. Because of the matter in which the hearing is being held, it's very difficult if you speak over each other. And Mr. Tuvall, while we appreciate, I'm sure, your assistance in trying to direct Mr. Gazarovski for folks who may be better qualified to answer. What happens is the, it's just unclear as to what's, what's going on. So if your witness, you know, your witness, you've told him six times not to speculate if he doesn't know the answer. I'm sure he can handle himself, but the back and forth when you're attempting to assist, and I'm putting it on the record that we recognize your attempt to assist, it, it actually muddies the waters a little bit more. It'd be, if you were.
I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to make things difficult, just trying to jump in when appropriate to make sure that the right person's answering the right question, that's all.
At this time, I have no further questions of this witness. I may have some additional ones after hearing the testimony from the engineer and the traffic consultant.
Through, through the.
Thank you, sir.
Tuvall, do you have any redirect?
I may, but could we take a, maybe a five- or ten-minute restroom break? Would that be okay?
I'll go along with it.
Mr. Chairman, would that be okay?
Where's Mr. Tuvall?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I made the mistake of walking back into my kitchen and seeing my dog and my kids, and it was not easy to get back here. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was in my kitchen.
Excuse me, one sec.
Where did Gazarovski go? All right, we're back in session. Mr. Gazarovski, you want to pick up where you left off?
I shall. What time are we going to this evening, Mr.?
Well, that, a lot of that depends on you. I think ten o'clock, we're going to call it.
That's fine. Is that in acquiescence or my age is you feeling sorry?
Ron, you've gotten mad at me for, for that before. You always, you always bust my chops about that, so.
You know what? Mr. Tuvall is one of the most gentlemanly advocates I've come across in the years I've been doing Land use work. So I've known him for a number of years, always a gentleman.
Thank you, thank you. You as well.
It's true. I, I have a couple of quick questions of Mr. Rayn Camp, but nothing major. How you doing, Mr. Rayn Camp? Now, I know that as the planner, you gave consideration to the entire site, did you not?
Generally, within my field, yes.
I understand that. Now, are you aware or not aware of the fact that the approval of this project calls for a number of either utilization of existing easements or the creation of new easements?
Generally, that's true, yes.
Okay. Do you know whether or not there'll be some new easements being created or secured?
Secured?
I think.
Let's use the word acquired, okay?
Yeah, Mr. Gazarovski, I think, again, that's a better question for Mr. Newman or Ms. Galvin than Mr. Rayn Camp.
Let me just, just this one generic question then. With regard to any easement which is being acquired concerning the utilization of his property, would you agree with me that for those newly-acquired easements, that notice must be given to property owners who are located within two hundred feet of that easement or to effectuate proper notice?
What, what easement are you, are you speaking of a specific thing? We could address it right now.
I was, I was asking him as a general question. If in fact, this plan calls for the necessity of the acquiring of an easement which is off-site, the acquiring of a new easement, would in fact notice have to be given to property owners who are located within two hundred feet of that newly-acquired easement?
So there's. I've seen that happen both ways. I mean, when you've got an improvement to a county intersection that's off-tracked, that's not typically considered part of the application.
Correct.
My knowledge, there's no acquisition of additional easements for the construction of the application.
Yeah, let me. Yeah, Mr. Gazarovski, there's no new easements being acquired. There's one easement going through the county-owned property, and we've noticed from two hundred feet from the county-owned property.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Rayn Camp, at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hey, good seeing you again.
Through the chairman, Mr. Tuvall, do you have any redirect based on Mr. Gazarovski's further question?
No, no, Mr. Chairman or Mr. Gardner. We're good.
Again, through, through the chairman, Mr. Gazarovski, if you'd kindly call your next witness.
I'm going to cross-examine my next witness, so.
I apologize.
No, I guess you, you younger guys, I guess this time is worse on you than it is on me. Who was the name of the engineer who testified?
Ms. Galvin.
Civil engineer, civil or traffic, Mr. Gazarovski? Yeah, Miss Galvin.
Mr. Verterese is the traffic engineer. I know that. Just a Galvin.
Okay, we'll bring Ms. Galvin up.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, it's Miss Galvin. I'm sorry. How you doing, Miss Galvin?
Fine, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Galvin, you've been previously sworn, but if you'd raise your right hand, do solemnly swear from the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board, will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Again, just for clarity of the record, kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation.
Yes, Daphne Galvin, G-A-L-V-I-N. I'm a site engineer with Partner Engineering and Science.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. And through the chair, Mr. Gazarovski, she is your witness.
I accept Ms. Galvin's qualifications also. Ms. Galvin, were you the engineer who was in charge of the development or the planning of this project?
Yes.
Okay, I take it as doing that, you also utilize the services of other engineers within your organization to assist you?
Yes.
Now, there's a series of reports, and I'm going to refer to them. I guess they're all in evidence. First, there's a report which is dated August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty from Owen Little and Associates. And signed by Douglas Cle, planning engineer, planning board engineer. Did you have occasion to review that?
Yes, Mr. Cle is the planning board engineer.
I also see something here from, that, that first report is dated August the twenty-fifth. There's a second report which is dated. I'm sorry, the one I'm referring to is August the twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty. There was an earlier one which was dated October the twenty-third of two thousand and nineteen. I take it that you reviewed both of those?
Yes.
Similarly, there is a report from Remington Burnick Engineers that was signed by Alan P. Deaton Hocker. That's dated September the ninth of two thousand and nineteen. And I take it you reviewed that as well.
Is that from the JTMUA engineering letter?
Just from Remington Burnick.
Yes, they're the JTMUA, Jackson Township Municipal Utilities Authority engineer?
Right.
Yes, I've seen that letter.
Okay, now, with regard to the letter dated October, August the twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty, do you have a copy of that document with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Ron, just, just refer to the document you were speaking of again. Sorry, you, your voice.
All right, it's a, it's a letter on the letterhead of Owen Little and Associates. It's dated. August the twenty-fifth, February two thousand and twenty. And it's signed by.
Here we go, Douglas Cle, right?
Cle, okay.
Okay.
Page twelve of twelve.
Okay.
Now, Ms. Galvin, were you present on this Zoom proceeding when I was cross-examining Mr. Rayn Camp?
Yes.
Okay, and there was a lot of discussion with regard to roadways, road widths, head-on parking, and the like. Were you present when I was asking him those questions?
Yes.
Now, I take it that as the engineer, you laid out those roadways, correct?
Correct.
And I take it that you also laid out the head-on parking stalls that we've been referring to throughout this evening?
Correct.
Now, Mr. Rayn Camp testified that all of the property in question is presently owned by the developer. And I take it that's true as well.
Yes.
Now, when you prepare your plans, you also lay out the roadways, correct? As well as the parking areas?
Correct.
Now, you're familiar with the RSIS standards?
Yes.
Now, in this particular project, is it not true that with regard to the right-of-way, there is a required fifty-foot right-of-way?
That's, yeah, that's one of the options for the right-of-way, yes, fifty.
When you say, what's the other option for the right-of-way?
Well, it's different roadway classifications, but that's the appropriate one for this situation.
We're not talking here about any options that are to this application. With this application, the fifty-foot right-of-way is required, correct?
The fifty-foot right-of-way is typical of a roadway classification that has a thirty-foot travelway.
And that's what this one has?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the necessity of, that the requirement for the fifty-foot right-of-way can in fact serve different purposes, can it not?
You mean, what other things have, occur within the right-of-way?
Well, what can occur within a right-of-way and what the right-of-way could be utilized for? I mean, for example, for example, in some scenarios, if it's necessary to widen a thirty-foot paved way, that pavement could be added within the ten-foot right-of-way on each side, widen the road perhaps to a paved area of forty feet or thirty-five feet. It can be utilized for that, correct?
Daphne, Daphne, before you answer, is that something that is in your purview? Would you, or do you believe a traffic engineer would provide a better answer on that?
I think either the traffic engineer even, Craig.
I don't agree with that for this reason. Ms. Galvin is in fact the engineer who laid out and designed this project. So she laid out a right-of-way consisting of a width of fifty feet and a paved area of thirty feet. She did that, and I'm asking here whether or not with regard to that ten-foot addition on each side of the paved way, how it, how it can be, how it can be utilized?
It would typically be utilized for sidewalk?
There's no sidewalk in this project, is there, over there?
Yes, there is. Along every roadway, there's.
Every roadway, okay. So you're saying the sidewalk could have been placed in a right-of-way?
The sidewalk in a majority of the locations is within the right-of-way, yes.
On this project?
Yes.
Okay, and do you know what percentile of the right-of-way would be utilized for that?
What percentile?
Let me ask this question. You followed my questioning of Mr. Rayn Camp. And my understanding is that in this project, there was a thirty-foot-wide paved roadway, correct?
Correct.
So that leaves you ten feet on each side.
Correct.
And in certain areas, he is installing head-on parking. And head-on parking stall, whether it's ten by eighteen feet or ten by twenty feet, the first ten feet of that parking area would be in the right-of-way specifically designated for the use of the residents of this project.
Was that, was that a question, Ron? I don't, I didn't hear a question, sorry.
A question, I thought. If she says it wasn't, I'd be glad to praise her. I thought she was.
No, I, I'm sorry. I just heard a statement also. If, if, sorry, I didn't hear a question either.
Yeah, could you phrase it? Could you rephrase it as a question, please?
Okay. I think we got to the point, I think we got to the point where we were talking about the thirty-foot-wide paved way, and now we're in the area of the ten feet, which is part of the right-of-way on the side of the paved way. And in that ten-foot-wide right-of-way, no matter what the length of it is, the full ten feet of that paved way in the area where the head-on parking is created, if, for example, there are three head-on parking spaces side by side, well, ten, the ten-feet depth of the right-of-way would be utilized as well as the thirty feet of the width. That would be in the right-of-way that is to become a part of the right-of-way owned by the municipality.
Correct.
Okay, then in addition to that, that head-on driveway, driveway, drive aisle is also an extended and additional perhaps five or six or seven feet onto the privately-owned property to create the head-on parking stall. That's the way it works, correct?
That's correct, and it's actually eight feet, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's ten feet, ten feet of the, ten feet of the right-of-way and eight feet of the private property for a depth of eighteen feet.
Correct.
Now, tell me if you can, you also referred to some of the sidewalks being in the right-of-way. What areas of the project are there sidewalks in the right-of-way?
Throughout the entire project.
Well, if you've got, if you've got the parking stalls and there's a depth of eighteen feet, where within that eighteen feet or within the ten feet is the, are the sidewalks located?
Right, throughout the project except at the locations where the sidewalk wraps around those parking areas.
Okay. So in those areas, we would have, we'd have 10-foot right-of-way, 8-foot property owned by the developer, and then a sidewalk also on the developer's property.
That's correct.
Right. Now, in how many instances are the sidewalks in the right-of-way?
I don't recall the total number of parking spaces, perpendicular parking spaces. The traffic engineer could provide that number. But wherever there is on-street head-in parking, the sidewalk would be outside of the right-of-way.
Okay, and what percentile of the sidewalks are located within the right-of-way?
I don't know what percentile. A majority of the sidewalks are located within the right-of-way.
Okay. If the sidewalks are in the right-of-way, going from the property out into the right-of-way, how far into the right-of-way would they protrude?
The sidewalks? How far would sidewalks protrude? The sidewalk, the rear of the sidewalk is adjacent, is coincidental with the right-of-way line.
And then how far into the right-of-way does it go?
I think it's a four-foot sidewalk, so four feet.
Okay. And then is there curbing after that? So the curbing is in the right-of-way as well?
Yes, there's also, there's a grass strip and then the curb.
Now, but with regard to where the head-on parking is, there is no grass, grass area, is there?
That's correct. The sidewalk is immediately adjacent to the curb in those areas.
Okay. Now, looking at the letter of August 25th, do you have that with you?
Yes.
Okay. Just bear with me for one second, please. Now, were you also, the engineer who prepared the plans for the north project?
Yes.
Okay. Now, would you agree with me that both the north and the south were projects to be contemplated within the four corners of the general development plan?
Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object and ask Sean, that Mr. Gardner, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that the questions be focused on the south application and what's before the board on this application specifically?
Well, I mean, I need the question is perfectly Noted on the record. That's a general question. However, I would ask that the witness, to the extent that she's qualified to answer it, she can answer that question.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Okay. You prepared the plans for both the north as well as the south site, correct?
Yes.
And for both of those sites, the north and the site, south, they were prepared in accordance with the four corners of the general development plan?
The four corners of the general development plan?
Yeah, the settlement agreement.
Oh, I'm not familiar with that term. Yes.
Four corners? Okay. Correct. So, in other words, when the general development plan was put together, signed and ordered, it was contemplated, there would be a north section as well as a south section.
Daphne, you don't have to give legal conclusions, but so
I like a really Did you understand the question?
The general development plan includes a north section and a south section.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that you could not have, would it be fair to say that the general development plan mandated that both of those sections be constructed?
I don't, again, Mr. Gazarovski, I think that that's a legal question. I don't know if that's an engineering question. So I'll put my objection on the record on that.
Were you present when there was discussion between myself and Mr. Rayn Camp and Mr. Tuvell with regard to the connector road?
You mean during tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. From an engineering perspective, if in fact the connector road were not constructed prior to the start of the north project, would that have an impact upon the surrounding area of the south project?
Again, I'm going to object to any questions regarding the north application, which includes the connector road. The matter is
Saying that the north includes the connector road, that's fine with me.
Well, it does.
Okay. Now, if you look at the October 23rd of 2019 letter from Mr. Clea, do you have that also with you?
The October 23rd, 2019 letter? No, I don't have that handy. I can go find it. You can read me the comment. It might be repeated in the August 25th letter. I'm not sure.
Okay. You can't pull it up on your computer?
I'm gonna try to pull it up right now.
Okay, take a shot at that. Okay.
Ron, this letter is in connection with the south as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No, I just, I didn't have it handy. I have to find it. I only have the most recent letter.
October 23rd, 2019, correct?
Yes. And Mr. Tuvell, where it says the subject matter, it says Jackson Park dash south section.
That's fine. I believe you. I just, I just didn't have that letter in front of me, that's all.
I've got the letter now.
Okay. Now, in the very beginning, the introductory paragraph is the chairman Riccardi and the board members. And what the Mr. Clea says, "We have reviewed and reviewed the following material submitted in conjunction with the reference application." You see that?
Yes.
Then he goes on to say in paragraph one, "General Development Plan for Jackson Park, Block 1401, Lots 5.01 and 5.04, Block 11404, comma, Lots 52 and 69, Block 17802, and Lot 57.01, Township of Jackson Ocean County, New Jersey." Now, that clearly shows there does it not, in assessing the plan for the south, you also considered the plan for the north because that's part of the general development plan. Correct?
Daphne, don't, again, that's what, you're asking her to, the reason I'm objecting, Mr. Gazarovski, is you're asking her to opine on what Mr. Clea put in his letter. If you have this, so if he reviewed something, he reviewed something, or if he listed something in his letter, he listed something in his letter. But this is an application for the south parcel only.
But he referred to the general
He can, he can refer to something else for all I know. But we're applying for the south.
Okay. Directing her not to answer?
Yeah, I'm not asking her to be in Mr. Clea's mind as to why he put something in a letter.
I'm not asking her to be in his mind. I'm asking her, what did he put in the letter?
Well, this letter speaks for itself.
Okay, fine. You directing her not to?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go down to number four. It refers to the lots in question being Lot 57.01, which I might add is also in paragraph one. And then it identifies south phase one. Can you tell me what phase one consisted of?
The subdivision of the parcel was broken down into multiple phases. I believe it was five. And the reference in comment number four was to phase one of those plans. If you continue on, you'll see phases two, three, four, and five referenced in the subsequent comment.
Okay. And I see that. I think number eight takes us up to phase five. Now, I know that somewhere in the letter, and I don't know if I could pick it out right now, there's a reference to those being standalone sections. Do you recall that?
I don't recall what the letter said about standalone sections.
Okay. In order to complete all of the improvements and basins and thinking in terms of the recreation buildings and whatnot, do all five sections have to be built?
Daphne, did you understand the question?
Yes, and my first thought is that the phasing of the subdivision plats is not necessarily the same as the phasing of the project and the construction of the project.
Explain that to me, please.
Sure. There were five phases identified with the plats. And there was a phasing plan submitted. Actually, the phasing plan was revised at one point and was resubmitted to the board and was presented by Mr. Newman, I believe, to the last hearing.
I think it was revised because the board was concerned with regard to the affordable housing being built, and I think that was the revision. That was the reason for the revision, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And I can tell you that there were four phases proposed on the revised phasing plan.
Well, would, would the, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but if the developer were to develop phase one and phase two, would he be able to get certificates of occupancy for the houses without having yet built phases three, four, and five?
So, Ron, Mr. Gazarovski, I think, are you asking that? And I just want to make sure we answer it correctly. Are you asking that in terms of the affordable units as to when they have to be online versus the market?
But let me, let me try to rephrase the question.
Okay, go ahead.
For example, to access the project generally, you may have to have ingresses and egresses, which are located in phase four, phase five, but not necessary for phase one. Will all of those roadways and improvements be put in at the same time? You know that?
Now, all of these site improvements would likely not be constructed at the same time, all of the roadway improvements.
They would not be?
No.
So you'd have a partially completed project, but you'd have people living in that?
People living in the sections that were under construction are completed.
Okay. Number nine, there's a reference there to Jackson Park South Road Improvement at CR 528 West Veterans Highway. Plans consist of 39 sheets. What exactly are those improvements relating to?
Those improvements are related to the, to the improvements to West Veterans Highway, which is County Route 528, which, upon which the parcel fronts, and those plans were developed by Dynamic Traffic and Mr. Verteresi's office.
If you know, can you tell me whether or not that particular improvement has anything to do with the connector road, if you know?
It's unrelated to the connector road.
Okay. Now, with regard to those improvements, do they require the acquisition of properties properties lying along the sides of the roadways in question?
I don't believe any acquisition is required for, to accommodate those improvements, but that should be verified by Mr. Verteresi.
So when you designed it and you laid it out, what are the improvements to be contemplated are within the right-of-way of the county?
Within the existing right-of-way or for, or widening across our frontage, right-of-way widening across our frontage?
Sorry, Mr. Gazarovski, maybe since the plan you're speaking to was developed by Dynamic, that Mr. Verteresi should speak to it.
Okay, I'll go with that. Now, when we're referring to the, for example, the number 20, the Stormwater Management Report, detention basin calculations. Where on the plan is the detention basin located? And what phase is it located?
There are multiple basins and they're in various phases.
Okay. How about in phase one and phase two?
Well, okay. So the construction phasing is designated by letter A, B, C, and D. The subdivision plat phasing is numerical, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So are you referring to the construction phasing?
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you said?
Sure. The construction phasing for the project is designated by letters. That's on the phasing plan A15A that was presented by Mr. Newman. The subdivision plats were numerical, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, phase five. Are you referring to the construction phasing?
Let me, let me interrupt for one second. Are you saying that with regard to the different phases, that they are being subdivided within the project? In other words, if you have five phases, are you saying that there will be five separate lots created within that property for the phasing?
Oh, no, there's, there's many more lots than that being created. It's that the, the intent for the subdivision was to file the subdivision in phases such that you weren't creating all of the lots in the initial phase. And again, it's just for subdivision purposes.
I'll have to get back to that with you. Mr. Chairman, it's 10 o'clock, and if we could end at this point, I would like to.
It's up, obviously, Mr. Chairman, it's up to the board. If we could finish Ms. Galvin's cross, that would be terrific, but I leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, if, if we can go an extra few more minutes. We'd appreciate that.
I'm gonna be going in just a few more minutes, so.
Gentlemen, I think we should finish up with Ms. Galvin.
Okay. Ms. Galvin, were you present when I questioned Mr. Rayn Camp with regard to the creation of this head-on parking in the right-of-way?
Yes.
And you present when I was questioning him with how he came to a determination of the percentile of impervious surface?
I don't remember the discussion about the impervious surface, except it was included, except that the roadway pavement was included in the overall site impervious coverage, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I'm looking at the page four of 12 of the October 23rd letter. And it has there, on page four, at the very bottom, maximum lot coverage, 70%. You see that?
Yes.
Now, my question is, when we know that with regard to the head-on parking, that a portion of the right-of-way was utilized. And my question of you is, when you did the computation, And my question to you is, when you did the computation for the maximum lot coverage, did you include that area of the right-of-way which was totally impervious?
The maximum lot coverage that's identified on page four of the review letter is relative to the single-family lots? It's not, I don't think it's pertinent to your question, unrelated.
Think with regard, uh, excuse me for interrupt, are you, but you, you finish your answer?
Sure, I think it's unre- I, I think it's unrelated to your question. I think this one is specifically limited to the single-family lots.
Uh, I don't know the answer to this question, but you know whether or not with regard to the townhouses and/or the apartment, uh, units, there's any provisions in the zoning ordinance for the percentile of lot coverage which is permitted?
I don't believe there's an overall standard for, uh, impervious coverage in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Uh, looking at the same chart, uh, where it says, uh, multi-family building to parking area setback, uh, twenty feet is required, eighteen is proposed. You know if that was corrected?
Uh, yes, that was corrected. We eliminated the, uh, the variance.
How about the minimum distance between multi-family buildings? Uh, was that remedied as well?
Yes.
Uh, going to page five of twelve, uh, going halfway down, it says minimum parking setback from road to drive aisle, uh, twenty-five feet is required. And here it says located in the right-of-way, and that requires a variance, correct?
I know, uh, Mr. Ray and Camp, I think, has, uh, discussed that already, and it's his position that a variance is not required.
Okay, uh, that's his position now. Uh, with regard to the placement of these units, whether it's the one-family residential or the apartments or the townhouses, whatever it may be, uh, were you given by the developer the number of units that he wanted to fit within the perimeters of this property?
Yes.
Okay, so you didn't take the lane and look at it and say, how am I going to develop it? Uh, you were told by the developer how he wanted to be developed, and those were your marching orders to fit it all within there?
There, there was a concept plan, uh, previously developed for the project for a section. We didn't, uh, I did not do the initial layout for the, uh, conceptual plan.
Okay. Coming down to the general comments, it says, all roads servicing the single-family homes are to be owned and maintained by Jackson Township. The applicant should address the ownership of the road servicing the townhouse and six apartment buildings. Uh, was that addressed or responded to, you know?
The, all of the roadways, uh, servicing the townhouses are intended to be public roadways. The, um, roadways, or I would call them parking lots that service the six apartment buildings would be privately owned. Homeowners Association.
The roadways and the parking lots.
Yes, they're more of a typical parking lot configuration as opposed to a roadway, more of a typical parking lot configuration.
But how about, how about the roads? What is, what is the, what is the width of those roads? If you know.
Which? Which roads, Mr. Gazarovski, just be specific.
Referring to, I believe, were the apartments are.
Yeah, remember, those might, those might be twenty-four because they are, uh, associated with a parking lot, uh. Yes, I believe the, uh, parking aisle dimension for the, uh, apartment buildings is twenty-four feet wide.
I'm sorry. Uh, let's talk first about the roadways, then what's, what's the width of those roadways?
The roadways throughout the, uh, South Parcel, um, are generally thirty feet wide, uh, except where we get into the parking lots associated with the apartments. And at that point, uh, the parking lot configuration includes a twenty-four-foot-wide driveway aisle.
Okay, uh, now, the driveway aisle is within the parking lot. But how about the roadway itself? What's the width of the roadway?
Which roadway?
That you're referring to where the apartments are.
There are, um, the apartments are adjacent to a roadway that's thirty feet wide. Uh, but I think that you're referring to the parking lots that surround the, uh, apartment buildings, and those aisles are twenty-four feet wide with parking on both sides in general.
Parking on both sides of the twenty-four-foot-wide traveled way?
Yes, a typical parking configuration, yes, parking lot configuration.
So if that were so, that would basically leave approximately, uh, what, fourteen feet for the, uh, two-way traffic?
No, it's a twenty-four-foot driveway aisle which accommodates the two, the two-way traffic, and then there are eighteen-foot-deep parking stalls on either side of twenty-four-foot aisle for a total of sixty feet.
I understand that. I'm almost sure. Uh, what, 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 uh, what test did you do with regard to determining where you would place basements and where you would not? And what impact that would have upon the water table of the site?
The, um, ability to install basements would, would be based upon the seasonal high-water table that was interpolated for each of the lots. If the, um, if the grading of the lot could accommodate a basement, a basement was installed, there's a basement in a majority of the single-family lots, I think about fifty-five out of the sixty-one lots have basements, some, some type of basement.
And I take it that all of those numbers will be viewed and approved by the township engineer?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in paragraph page seven of twelve, it says, the stormwater basin outlet should be directed to existing wetland areas adjacent to the site. The applicant should confirm adequate capacity of downstream area to accept all basin outflows from this development. Now, are you referring to existing wetlands on the site, or are you referring to wetlands which are off of the site? Can you excuse me for one second? I'm gonna drive my car home and bring this right over. I'll be another fifteen minutes. I'm sorry, I, excuse me for the interruption. Uh, on page seven of twelve, under sub-paragraph B two, the basins will be directed to existing wetland areas adjacent to the site. You see that?
Yes.
Now, are those wetlands on the site or are they off-site?
Uh, uh, he's referring to, I believe he's referring to wetlands that are on the site or along the property line, the northerly property line.
Well, if they're along the property line, that would mean that a part of those wetlands are off the site, aren't they?
Well, some of the wetlands areas that actually impact the site are off the site. And the buffer, the transition area extends onto the site.
When you say that it's off-site, either way, are they, are they in private ownership or in ownership by the state, or you don't know?
I believe that um, I don't, I don't know if all of the adjoining properties are, uh, publicly owned or not. I don't recall.
You, you know how far, I'm sure, you know how far into these adjacent properties, uh, the wetlands are?
Daphne, if you don't know the answers, uh, co- um, exactly, then don't, don't expect.
It varies, it varies quite a bit, actually, it varies.
When you say quite a bit, starting with zero, uh, what's the other end of that variation?
So the question is, how far away are the wetlands?
Right.
The wetlands line from the property?
Right.
Um, in some cases, the wetland line is, um...
Daphne, I'd rather, I'd rather.
I don't know, it's, it's an awkward question.
I'd rather you, you get the answer correctly and then get back to Mr. Gazarovski.
Fine, in other words, you know, the room is, you know, but if, if, so long as I have the opportunity when Ms., uh, Galvin returns, I could answer the question, I don't.
Or we can just get you the answer, that's fine.
Can I clarify one thing?
Clarify whatever you like.
Yes, I, because I think I can answer it a different way, and then we won't have to worry about coming back to do it. Um, on the northerly property line, the, there are, there's a wetland limit either on-site or within the buffer width that's required such that there is a buffer on the property. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, because the buffer widths vary also. So it's not a consistent buffer width, so it's a very difficult question.
I, I, I know it's difficult, and now with some of those buffers off the site or all the buffers on the site?
Both.
Can you give me the basins that you're referring to in your plan, so I could, uh, look at it?
Well, I can refer to one of the exhibits that was, uh, provided. It's Exhibit A three.
But I'm sorry, what is it?
Exhibit A three.
Okay, that's fine. Going on in that paragraph two, so the applicant should confirm adequate capacity of downstream area to accept all basin outflows from this development as well as downstream stability. Now, uh, the basins in question, they are detention basins, I take it?
Yeah, for clarification, there are no outlets. So, um, there are no, no, uh, direct discharges from these basins. They...
They're retention basins, not detention?
No, they infiltrate, the basins infiltrate, so there's no discharge into the adjoining areas.
So when you say they infiltrate, they, you mean they infiltrate beneath the floor of the basin? Is that the way it works?
They soak into the ground, correct.
Okay. And have all of those, uh, specifications been submitted to the township engineer to review? In other words, you've determined what the high-water table is uh, beneath the basin, and you, you're confident or you've shown to him that there can be this infiltration? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Uh, on page nine of twelve, this is what I don't, you're on that page now?
Yes.
On page eight B, which says phasing, the applicant should review proposed project phasing and confirm all individual sections will be established as standalone. What does that mean?
I believe what Mr. Klee was referring to was that as each section is constructed, um, it can, it can stand alone, meaning whatever is necessary to get the first section to, um, be occupied by residents constructed as part of the first section. And if you go to the second section, then everything that's necessary for the second section will be available for those residents.
For, for example, if it's necessary, uh, to construct a road in, from a different section coming off a roadway, that roadway, that road section will be completed so that it can be occupied? I think I answered.
Yes.
All right, uh, on page ten of twelve, it says, the applicant should discuss proposed triggers for completion of all road improvements, clubhouse, and recreational amenities. What does that mean, triggers?
I believe that was related to the project phasing, which was discussed by Mr. Newman. It probably ties into the affordable housing units and recreation amenities and things like that.
Okay. On the last page, page eleven of twelve, uh, the last three bullet points, uh, multi-family parking area setback, twenty feet required, eighteen feet proposed, uh, was that corrected?
Yes, that was the items in the table that you asked about.
Okay. The last bullet point, he still says in this letter, minimum parking setback from road, forty-five feet required located in right-of-way. Just so I understand what twenty-five feet means. Assuming for the sake of argument that the end of the pathway has occurred, and now we're going into the property, uh, when they say uh, twenty-five feet, uh, are they able to utilize the uh, area of the right-of-way as a part of that twenty-five-foot setback? If you know.
I'll defer that to Mr. Ray and Camp. There was a lot of discussion about that. That's Mr. Ray and Camp discussing.
I understand that. I have a further question. Thank you very, very much.
Um, through the chairman, Mr. Tuval, do you have any redirect?
Nope, not at this time, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is a matter of housekeeping. Um, Mr. Tuval's aware, Mr. Gazarovski may or may not be aware. This matter, uh, will be carried March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Without the need of further notice, the applicant, the public, professionals are directed to the municipal website and to township public publications and newspapers for the, um, for, for the ability to participate virtually. In addition, for the public and for Mr. Tuval and Mr. Gazarovski, that March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting is entirely dedicated to this application pursuant to agreement between the board and the applicant.
And, Mr. Gardner, that, that meeting's at seven thirty PM starting, correct?
Yes, sir.
And if, if anyone from the public wants to get the information like you indicated, they can go on the website or contact the, uh, the board secretary, right?
Yes.
All right, but the, and the applicant, the applicant will not be providing any more publication or, or mail notice, correct?
That is correct. Just for further clarification, Mr. Gazarovski, um, we've asked before, there was some discussion. We would appreciate both for our technical staff as well as just nomenclature, uh, and idea, not of, an idea of how many and whom, uh, your witnesses will be on...
I'll, I'll do that.
And the reason is we need to know, it's much easier for us to know upfront who they are, both for reasons of participation uh, in terms of whom you represent, but also for our technical staff. So we will hopefully be following up with that information, please.
Thank you.
And, and Sean, the, the meeting will be virtual to the, to the public, but the board will be as it is today in the, in the, uh, in the municipal building, correct?
Uh, correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody.
With, with that, can I get a motion to the room, please? Own favor? Aye. Good night, everyone, thank you.
Aye.